Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am superintendent Dr. Michael Dantona.
Yes.
Thank you. I know IA, first time I can say that publicly.
Yay.
I want to thank you for allowing me the time in your schedule to engage you with you in two important matters. This evening, I am joined by our budget matter expert, Yelena Nagdymov, our senior grants officer, who supports our schools with budget and grant-related matters. I'm also joined by Louis Letito and Jenny Chang, who will be our monitors for our dialogue placed in the chat. Today, we will share our plan for state contracts for excellence funding, also known as C4E, and our proposed class size reduction plan, a newer part of the Contracts for Excellence process. I will review each topic and then provide the process for public comment for each. Again, thank you for allowing us time on your agenda today. And let us dive right into the presentation, which I will show right now. You are open, now you're closed. There we go. So today, we will discuss two topics for the upcoming 2425 school year. I'll provide an overview of the funding, share dollar amounts allocated to the Department of Education, and how the funding will be allocated to schools, and impose restrictions on how some funds are spent. At the end of each topic, we will share how you can provide comments on what I have presented. The two topics tonight are state C4E and class size. The state C4E portion of the presentation is being recorded, and any feedback or public comments related to C4E will be submitted on your behalf. You may also share feedback or public comment on information shared in the presentation by using the designated email address noted after each topic we will cover. I will point out the designated email address at the conclusion of each topic. Our New York City Public Schools team will be taking public comments received into consideration in the coming weeks in alignment with the public process. The first topic being presented today is Contract for Excellence, also commonly referred to as C4E. First, let me provide some background on Contracts for Excellence. C4E legislation was established as part of the 2007/08 enacted state budget under Foundation Aid and requires that a portion of Foundation Aid be used for specific restricted purposes. C4E requires that funding be allocated toward specific programs that raise the achievement of students with the greatest educational need, including but not limited to those students with limited English proficiency, students in poverty, and students with disabilities. We are required by state law to annually develop through a public process a citywide Contract for Excellence and Community School District Contract for Excellence. The public process is how parents, teachers, and other school community members and interested parties provide input about the citywide and community school district C4Es and about the allocation of C4E funding in their schools. Our public process includes this meeting, as well as other meetings that superintendents will be conducting across the city with their respective CECs, and five borough hearings that will also be happening during this period of time. Although the C4E process is not new, we have submitted a C4E plan since school year 2007/08. Under recent changes to state law, the timeline for the public process, including the district's C4E presentation, has changed. We are now required to start the process no later than 30 days after the enactment of a state budget, and we are also required to provide notice of the public process 15 days prior to the first public hearing. State law requires that Community School District Contracts for Excellence be presented by superintendents at CEC meetings to enable public comment on those C4E plans. To that end, we will be recording all comments made in this meeting. This important process allows families and community members an opportunity to provide input about how their schools are funded. It is an essential element in the C4E plan that New York City Public Schools submits to the state, which the state must approve in order for the New York City Public Schools to receive C4E funding. Funding must be spent only within the following initiatives. For illustration examples of programs by initiative subject to SED approval are included below: additional instructional time, or also known as time on task. Examples include extended school day or year initiatives, model programs for multilingual learners. Examples include expansion of bilingual resources, resource materials and libraries, full-day pre-K in kindergarten, adding classes, additional staff, and/or costs related to implementing full-day pre-K programs, class size reduction, hiring and placing additional teachers in a classroom to reduce the student-teacher ratio, teacher and principal quality initiatives. Example, the creation of noncash incentive program to encourage high-quality teachers to teach in high-needs areas, middle and high school restructuring, expanding participation in advanced placement programs. Additionally, the SED commissioner may authorize districts to implement experimental programs. Such authorization must be granted in advance of implementation. For more information around eligible uses and requirements, they may be found on the New York State's website using the link that is provided within this presentation. Each year, New York State Education Department sets a New York City Public Schools C4E amount based on the annual increase in Foundation Aid in excess of 3%. In FY 2025, the amount of funding we designate toward C4E is increasing by $45 million to $803 million for 2025. It is important, it is also important to note that there has been $183 million of C4E embedded in fair student funding since 2007/08. In the upcoming school year, this funding will continue to be part of fair student funding. However, it will be identified as C4E and allocated separately from fair student funding. Additionally, it will be restricted to be used for teacher salaries only to ensure full utilization. This is not new, this is not a new use of this allocation. It has always been assumed that C4E is embedded in fair student funding to support teacher salaries. This just demonstrates that more clearly. Were this funding to be used for another purpose, the DOE would not be able to continue funding all schools at 100%. There is an additional increase in Foundation Aid of $137 million that is planned to be allocated to support schools in meeting the state's class size reduction mandate and may also be subject to C4E. Now for the breakdown of the C4E funding. We categorize C4E allocations as discretionary and targeted. Discretionary means that schools may use C4E funding in any eligible way that best meets the needs of their students. Targeted means that C4E is being used to support a specific program, and schools must use C4E funding in support of that program. Of the $803 million, $487 million of it will be allocated as discretionary C4E, and $316 million will be allocated as targeted. The $316 million of targeted programs now include: $183 million of fair student funding to be used toward teacher salaries, $87 million for integrated co-teaching classrooms, $30 million for academic summer programming, $9 million for full-day pre-K, and $7 million for autism spectrum disorder classrooms. Now we're going to take a closer look at the citywide proposed allocations. Combined discretionary funding that's existing and new makes up 60.68% of the proposed allocation. And you'll notice that the lines that they're talking about are present on this slide where you see discretionary existing, 55.07%, and then discretionary and additional 5.61% on the screen. Those two make up the discretionary allocation. Targeted allocations make up 39.32%, with the greatest share of that being attributable to fair student funding at 22.78%. And that you see right here, which equates to $182.8 million. Integrated co-teaching classrooms, summer programming, full-day pre-K, and autism spectrum disorder classrooms make up a combined 16.55% of the allocation. Now in relation to our district, you'll see here that our discretionary funds equate to 57.25% and an additional 1.92% equating to over 59% of our allocation, amounting in nearly $18 million. You also see that our fair student funding money is 29.22% for District 25, along with other funds that support summer programming, full-day pre-K, and as well as autism spectrum disorder classrooms. We will now take public feedback into account in the coming weeks as we continue to work toward complying with this mandate. The deadline for submitting public comment will be June 24. Please share your comments and feedback by using C4E email address that you see on the screen. And certainly, this is an opportunity now for any of you to share any public comments that you feel necessary based on the C4E allocations that we just discussed, or that I just shared, rather.
The C4E is for students who need help, Hector help primarily?
Yeah, primarily for multilingual learners, students with disabilities and the like, yeah.
And then so the citywide budget is just over $800 million, and then this District 25 is just over 30?
Yeah. Within the context of C4E.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the next component of this presentation is the Class Size Reduction Plan. We already discussed the C4E funding stream. Now we can wrap up by discussing the Class Size Reduction Plan. In September 2022, Governor Hochul enacted Chapter 556 of the laws of 2022, which requires the New York City School District to create a five-year class size reduction plan for all New York City schools, K to 12, in our community districts and high schools. Chapter 556 sets forth requirements that apply only to New York City school districts, including new class size caps for all public K to 12 community district and high schools, a class size reduction plan, which must be approved by the United Federation of Teachers and the Council of School Supervisors and Administrators. These are the unions representing New York City School District teachers and principals respectively, and submitted as part of the Contract for Excellence. A prescribed timeline for the public process for the development, posting, and submission of the Contract for Excellence, annual implementation reports on the status of the Class Size Reduction Plan, penalties in the form of reduced state funding if adequate progress to reduce class size is not met. The law imposes specific class size caps within the New York City School District for the first time. Prior legislation required a plan to reduce average class sizes and did not set forth specific average class size caps. Class size caps had been previously set subject to collective bargaining agreements between New York City Public Schools and the United Federation of Teachers and could be exceeded in certain circumstances. As a reminder, the law prescribed specific class size caps of 20 students in kindergarten through third grade, 23 students in grades four through eight, and 25 students in grades nine through 12, with 40 students in PE and performing arts, performing groups in all grades. On May 7, New York City Public Schools released a draft version of the Class Size Reduction Plan for the 2425 school year. As a reminder, this plan must be signed off on by the United Federation of Teachers, the Council for Supervisors and Administrators, in addition to the New York City Public Schools. The posted version has not yet been signed off on by the UFT or CSA. As noted in the plan itself, New York City Public Schools is currently in compliance with the law for the 2324 school year. New York City Public Schools anticipates continuing to be in compliance for the 2425 school year, and has named policy changes in the plan that will ensure we will meet the compliance target of 40% for the 2425 school year. The draft plan includes specific actions for schools along with a breadth of commitments to implementation that we're undertaking across New York City Public Schools' central offices alongside SEA, which I will discuss in more detail on the next slide. Public is able to provide feedback on the draft plan via this process, and the email to share feedback is in the final slide of this section. Now, just some highlights around the Class Size Reduction Plan. At the start of the plan, we'll highlight critical data points regarding current compliance across the city. Our compliance rate for 2324 is 40%. The required benchmark for this school year is 20%. The changes proposed in the plan, we believe, will ensure we continue to meet the benchmark of 2425 at 40%. Data shows that districts with the greatest percentage of classes at or below class size caps are District 23, 7, 16, 26, 28, 31, and have the lowest percentage of classes at or below the class size caps. The Bronx is the most compliant borough with 54% compliance, whilst Staten Island is the least compliant at 24%. Our highest need quartile of schools are 62% compliant. Our lowest need quartile of schools are 25% compliant. We continue to expect to need 10,000 to 12,000 teachers, of which 3,000 to 4,000 will be special education. Next, I will provide an overview of key components of the plan. The draft plan includes the development of district-level targets for all districts across the city. All superintendents of schools covered by the law will be asked to improve compliance across their district by 3%. This includes an accompanying menu of possible options that superintendents and teams can work with schools to implement and include strategies like repurposing space, maximizing teacher programming, fully programming existing instructional space, reallocating funding to support class size reduction, utilizing multi-session programming, and considering virtual learning as a strategy. This approach allows New York City Public Schools to drive compliance at a citywide scale with the flexibility for superintendents and schools to determine the best path forward for their school and community context. The draft plan also outlines the addition of funding for class size, including an additional $45 million in C4E funds which can be used for class size or any other eligible purposes, and an additional $137 million that may only be used for class size but may also be subject to C4E. The draft plan also outlines a significant effort around teacher recruitment and hiring. These action items include providing a robust package of hiring resources to schools, including an earlier application window for hiring teachers in high-needs schools, peer recruiters, school tours for prospective candidates in the Bronx, and increasing the number of early recruitment stipends. New York City Public Schools also commits to expanding pathways for career New York City Public School students to become teachers with work within the Office of Student Pathways and in supporting paraprofessionals and teacher aides in becoming teachers. New York City Public Schools also outlines its commitment around capital planning with the School Construction Authority to ensure that we are working collectively to increase the number of available seats where there are needs. Included in the report is a table that illustrates the timing and school district impacts of 27,000 seats coming online from the previous capital plan, as well as a detailed list of schools will be positively impacted by the new construction. The Class Size Working Group met throughout most of 2023 to deeply understand the law and make recommendations to the chancellor to consider as New York City Public Schools works to implement the law. The draft plan does act on many of the Class Size Working Group's recommendations, including the following recommendations from each committee. From the enrollment in space and capital planning committees, relevant New York City Public School divisions should work together with SEA on a unified class size plan, develop and implement information gathering surveys. New York City Public Schools should develop a plan that includes repurposing and maximizing existing school space, recognize the need for more school space and capital construction, improve strategies to identify sites for schools and expand classroom space. The Hiring and Staffing Subcommittee, beginning in the 2324 school year, the Working Group recommends prioritizing hiring teachers with an earlier application window for higher-need schools that have class sizes above the mandated limits, located in the harder-to-staff districts, create a formalized process for human resources in the New York City Public Schools to perform exit interviews, collaborate with SUNY, CUNY, and regional universities to help connect New York City Public Schools with graduates, work with current New York City Public School students and graduates to develop pathways to become teachers, build and strengthen pipelines for paraprofessionals and teacher aides to become teachers. The Budget and Finance Committee. New York City Public Schools should engage in modeling that does not just consider overall expense, but the ability for a wide range of types of schools to meet costs, aggressively pursue new opportunities for potential funding from New York State and federal sources, including New York City Public Schools increasing their advocacy for these funds. As a reminder, this is a draft version that has not yet been signed off by UFT or CSA, who are required to sign off our final plan. We'll now share the process for providing feedback on the draft Class Size Reduction Plan on the following slide. We will consider all feedback received on our proposed plan during the public process. The deadline for submitting the public comment will be June 24. Those who wish to provide feedback may submit their comments by emailing by email to classsize@schools.myc.gov. This concludes the presentation. Please be mindful of the email addresses provided for public comment for each section. Thank you for your time. And I'll let you return to your very, very important end-of-year meeting agenda. But before, that's beyond our space. We have already gone through our regular CEC. But are there any questions or comments?
Did I hear you say Zoom lessons are an option? Will help reduce class size?
So virtual learning was an option that was put in there as an option?
Is primarily for our high schools?
Primarily high school option?
Question for you.
Yeah.
Does that mean like they would kind of go into that remote setting like before in that sense?
I'll say that again, Eden. I'm not sure I know what you mean.
So like the virtual learning aspect, if like that was used, would that be like kids going back to going to school at home?
Yeah, it would be very much, very much like remote learning that had taken place, you know, during the pandemic. Their instruction would be delivered by, in a remote, in a remote way. You know, and I do know that they, you know, I believe they've piloted that example, you know, in spaces, you know, in the city, and, you know, primarily high school example.
Okay, thank you.
That is an option that is being included.
Would it be an option to opt into? Or would you be assigned to it?
Yeah, no, would not be, would not be an assigned space. It would be based on, based on, yeah, conversations with students and parents, I would imagine, to, you know, to engage in that type of learning, yeah. Yeah, it would not be, Mike, you have to go to remote learning versus Louis, who does not.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how about, what age, teacher, right? Become a teacher.
Say that again.
Like, what is it, teacher A?
School Aids.
Yeah, school A, become a teacher. How do they do the, do they have to get the COGS degree first? Or?
Yeah, so, yeah. So there would be a process for, you know, for accelerating the opportunity for folks that do not have their degree in order to become teachers. What that, you know, how detailed that is in terms of the timeframe, I couldn't necessarily give you off the top of my head, but, you know, it would be a process for anyone that was looking to become a teacher to be able to do so. And, you know, I think about, you know, even many of our paraprofessionals, and my mom being, was a paraprofessional, that was, in my opinion, a teacher without the likes to do so. You know, so I think creating opportunities for folks to, in fact, you know, do that very thing, that are very capable of, you know, joining the teacher workforce. Creating opportunities like that, I think, is pretty purposeful. So.
Did you say you were a para?
No, my mother was a para. My first, my first assignment in education was as a paraprofessional during a summer program. It was one of my first experiences as an educator, was as a para. I think it was a young, very young, very young guy at the time. Maybe 21 is when I started that, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. So I understand that now the class size reduction is happening, and then now our budget moving, allocating as well. I noticed that there are some parents still out there in District 25. They're not aware of a class size reduction. So since we are now putting these plans into action, is there any way that we could actually let parents more, I'll say, aware of these changes? Is there anything that we could do for parents to be aware? Because, because when I talked about the class reductions to parents, they were worried. Of course, they're worried, like, what if their kids cannot get a seat in on next middle school, and what happens? You know, our District 25 is, you know, one of the overcrowded districts. So I just want to know, since we represent parents, I just want to know, is there any way that we could actually let parents know these changes that are putting into an action?
Yeah, and I think, you know, part of, you know, what we'll be doing as a collective body, especially as we see more of our schools starting to to be developed and organized over the, over the next several years. We have a few new buildings that are going to be coming. A large part of the role of the CEC is going to be around organizing, you know, who goes to those schools, you know, in context of connecting with, with space planning and the like. But it will be conversations around that because they, those schools will be in spaces where other schools are actually currently, you know. So it will be conversations around how do we organize around that. So there'll be a lot more discussions surely, you know, certainly here at the CEC level, but certainly at the district leadership team, and then, you know, just as importantly, at the school leadership team level as well, including, you know, going into this, this coming school year as schools right now try to organize around class size reduction in their own buildings.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think you already answered this question last time. Is there a place that we can go and look like school by school? What, where they are with the class size? And, you know, like, where they are, school by school? So if I wanted to look at, for example, this, or say, you know, where are we in this? Are we, I know we have additional space now, right? So what we're doing with that, what we might do with that? Where we are, you know what I mean? Where we are, what our needs are, and how many people are going to come?
So within, within the plan, there is kind of a space to kind of indicate where we're at as a, as a district. For this, some of that will start to shift because of the expectations that have been put forward with, you know, with all districts trying to decrease, to reduce class size across our schools, you know, with that 3% threshold. Part of the work that myself and our budget director are doing with our building leaders, in fact, right now, is looking at budget, looking at our classrooms, and organizing for that moving into next school year. So even what you have right now will likely be a little bit different from what happens come September.
Is there, is there a location? Is that located anywhere online?
So that I have to double-check. I know that they have the overview of District 25. I don't know if they break it down by school. That's something that we can certainly organize over time, no, for sure. Yeah. We are certainly in one of the quadrants that when we talk about, about, you know, meeting class size, we're in that 25% quadrant. You know, we're not in the side where we are, you know, 60% plus of our classrooms right now that are currently complying with that. But the goal over time is that our schools can start organizing in ways that class size becomes more of a reality in their, in their buildings. You know, and that's currently what they're, what they're working to do right now. You know, and... You know, and maybe not perhaps across a hundred percent of their rooms, right? Uh, but through the, the space of compliance within, within the law growing over time is what the, what the goal is. And, you know, part of that conversation, we have to be, you know, we have to be mindful of, you know, we make this choice, you know, what happens then thereafter over time? In terms of that ripple effect that occurs when you make one of those choices, so. Um, but we are in, we're in process of working through that right now with our budgets, um, and our building leaders.
So, so if, if principals determine in their building that they have some extra space that they can thin out some of the classes to meet the law now, they then apply, how do they get, they come to you for the funding?
So, so schools receive an allocation for reducing class size. It's part of their budget.
As part of, as part of.
It's part of this, part of this, yeah.
Okay, so each year they're, they're already getting, they're already.
So the goal, yeah, the goal would be that of, you know, as, as things move forward, you know, I would, would, uh, I can't predict what, what the budget will, will look like in, you know, next year or the year after, but, um, yeah, I would imagine that it will certainly increase to support additional classes, additional teachers and such. Yeah.
But they won't, they already know what is coming for them.
They should have an idea where they're at, yeah.
To be able to, okay, start making some.
Make decisions, absolutely. Sure.
So Dr. Mike, does that might be the recruiting of new teachers and stuff that's happening like now?
Yeah, you know, I think, um, part of that whole process is to organize around, around increasing teachers. And, you know, for us, we're always in, in that space of looking even without, without class size law. So, uh, part of that recruitment is, is, is out there in present, you know, the hiring bears and, and the like that are, that have already taken place in, you know, in district to offer, um, particularly in areas that we do need. So we did one of those in April, um, you know, just as a, as a means of, of building up, you know, the bank of potential teachers for, you know, for the district.
Got you.
Yeah. It's one of those things, you'll always hear me, someone says they're a teacher, they're looking for a job. It's like, oh, are you okay? Let's take down, let's take that resume and start sharing them out, uh, sharing them out widely, uh, you know? Because honestly, it's funny, you know, you, you wind up landing some of, some of the, some of the best folks just by happenstance. You just happen to be next to someone that mentions that they have, uh, you know, a sibling or this person or that person that's looking to become a teacher and then they wind up becoming amazing educators in your classrooms just by word of mouth. Sometimes it's really important too. You know, so even as you guys hear, you know, it's always a, a space to, to share, um, access to really good people that want to be teachers. We'll always, we'll always put those names forward, sure.
But support for the teachers are, are also included in the class size reduction funding?
Say that again, Shirley?
Um, support for the teachers or educators are also included in class size reduction funding?
What do you mean support for? You mean like training?
Uh, training and or I, I know it's, uh, like more benefits for teachers, you know? Something to, you know, I, I believe that like if there's more benefit being a teacher and more support towards training than.
So like, you know, sometimes they'll, you know, the offering of additional, additional funds for, you know, for higher, you know, hard, hard to staff needs, that, that kind of thing. Is that what you mean, Shirley?
Yes.
Um, I do believe that was something that I, that I, I did mention, uh, where, you know, certain spaces, uh, at times they do offer other incentives, um, you know, to, to recruit teachers, um, you know, to, to build the, the workforce, um, you know, so those opportunities are out there.
It's mostly by, sorry to interrupt, it's mostly in the Bronx, hard to staff, uh, districts.
Yeah.
And the benefits are outlined by the U F T contract. So it's all, the benefits are all the same for all the teachers under, uh, the union contract. And schools decide to use their funding for professional development. They, that is within the principal's power and, and, uh, uh, school S L T to dedicate certain portion of their, of their budget, uh, for teacher professional development.
Yeah, and all new teachers, there's an expectation that they receive mentoring support, um, you know, to, you know, to, to grow their practice throughout, uh, throughout their tenure, especially in the, the beginning parts of their career. So all teachers will receive, um, mentoring aside from, you know, schools that do have coaches and coaching support, you know, to help elevate their practice. So that is commonplace across all of our schools. You'll see, um, opportunities for mentoring, uh, for any of our new teachers in our buildings.
Thank you.
Sure, Shirley. Any other comments?
Anybody on that?
There are, I'm looking at nine numbers, number nine on that. I don't know that, Louis, are there any other?
There's no comments in the chat.
Yeah.
And, uh, all the people on the call are C E C members. Uh, besides this, uh, about safety issue for school.
So.
You know, can we request more? I don't, today, you know, topic is not for that, but.
I mean, I'd be happy to close this and we can talk about, we can talk about other things if you like. Um, but anything in relation to, to class size or, or C four E before we bring this part too close?
Can we ask what if questions?
What if questions?
Yes.
That's the whole idea of the, of the public comment, Joe, so.
So you must have a, right, so the D O E has a number of eight graders right now in the city. Do they have that many seats in high schools? And if they don't, are they going to result the issue? They are going to be building school fast enough. Right, so I think it's beyond us because they have a number, they should know. If they have, let's say they have ten thousand, let's say ten thousand, I don't know, fifteen thousand eighth graders, but they have fifteen thousand C C nine grade throughout the city, they don't, what are they going to do?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't necessarily speak intelligently about that because I don't have those.
That's not one, that's not one.
Yeah, those type of, yeah.
They must be a P S or M S, X X X Q. That's maybe fifteen, twenty percent in compliance, compliance. Would you maybe then allow some of the kids to go to a neighboring school where they may be eighty percent? Yeah, otherwise they're not going to their own school.
Uh, meaning that we're going to rotate children to other buildings?
Yes.
So I think that the goal for, for us is to make sure that we're, we're managing within our buildings um, to support the needs of our kids. I think where we wound up having a little bit of a different conversation is when new schools start coming online, uh, within the coming years. That's when we start having different discussions around, you know, the who goes, who goes where type of scenario, I think. Um, and for us, we have a couple of those circumstances that are going to be coming up and online over the next couple of years, including a couple of new additions, um, as well as new schools. So those conversations will start kind of picking up around, you know, we, we do have these seats. Let's make sure that we're making, optimizing, um, you know, the, the classroom space that we have. Um, so that will be certainly a forward-thinking conversation around, uh, around that work uh, within the next, why would I say, I don't think they've broken, broken ground yet, but you're talking within the next couple of years. The intent is for those buildings to be finished.
I can predict we'll go to those schools. The D O E will send the bottom kid there.
No, I, I don't.
I would put the top kid there. So you're sending a message, you want to go there, you got to work hard, get the grades, and you can go. The D O E is all going to do in some places.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I don't know that there are any schools, certainly not here, that, that we, we do what you just suggested. Um, you know, for, for, you know, for our community, it's around, you know, especially in, in the, the school they're going to build in Flushing, you know, it does happen to be right in an area where there are multiple other elementary schools. You have, um, P S twenty-four is down the block. You have P S two, two forty-four down the block, and then you have, uh, P S twenty, that's not too far off. So then it does become conversations around how is that organized for, uh, for new, for children that are going to be new to that particular brand new school. Uh, you know, that's much further down the road, but those are conversations that will start taking place, um, so that we, we optimize and maximize the use of a brand new building. Much like has happened in the past in other schools that have, have been developed.
I just wanted another question. How many migrant children are entering, um, District Twenty-five? Do they have a negative impact on the class size reduction efforts?
So what, what, a- and you know this, Joe, is that in, in District Twenty-five, we we are a hotbed of new learners all the time. Um, and we do not tag children as someone who is a migrant child versus a student that, um, you would say that has just come here from another, from another country.
That's not what I meant. That's not what I meant.
But I can't give you an answer to something that there's, there, I, I'm not collecting data to say that this child is from here or that child's from there, uh, and this is how they got here. Um, so I can't tell you that, that we have five thousand children that have come here.
That's not what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Um, like, overall, like, for example, right? Last year in September, you had a thousand kids over the counter.
Hmm.
Uh, this September, you may have two thousand or fifteen hundred. How are you going to deal with that five hundred additional kids? Where are you going to put them?
So right.
Do they have a negative impact on?
So, so right now, since the pandemic, we're about two thousand students under where we were four years ago. Um, we were over twenty-six thousand children at one point in District Twenty-five. We're at twenty-four thousand, three hundred plus, um, at this point now. So we, we've actually seen, um, a decline over time in our overall, uh, population as a district since, since the pandemic. Um, it has upticked a little, um, you know, since our kind of low watermark. Um, but we are still, you know, far from what our top number of, of students was, has been in, in District Twenty-five in the past. So we're right now under the, well, under the number of children that we've had when we were kind of at our, at our peak of the number of students. Like I said, it has increased, but not to the level where we once were. Yeah, so.
Good answer. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think, Joe, actually what you said about, um, having it be a high achieving school, I think, I think that it would be nice in District Twenty-five to maybe have a gifted and talented school, um, for the kids who need a, maybe a different type of learning in that, in that way.
Hmm.
Um, where they're going to be maybe pushed a little more and, um, just working maybe at a different pace than at, at, at a more accelerated pace.
So just on the, on the, on the class size conversation, anything else on that? Because then we can close and we can talk about certainly other things if you'd like.
Any other comments?
Any other questions or comments on that?
We're good. Can we move to, uh, term the meeting? Okay.
Second.
All favor join the meeting. Please join. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, Bob.
Louis, you can close on the, on the recording if you haven't yet. Um, yeah, I think, you know, as, um, as times go, time goes on and we start organizing around, um, around space, there will be opportunities for, for us to think about, you know, cool ways.